All right, welcome back to the Newport Beach City Council meeting of November 10th, 2020. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Heardman is absent.
All right, before we go into current business, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neil. Just note, we're going to remove item 4A, the conference with legal counsel. That's scheduled for closed session from the agenda.
All right. And then I'll say this again before, you know, right before we recess, but this is study session and then our regular meeting will start at 6:00. All right, so we'll move first into study session item number one, clarification of items on the consent calendar. I'll go just left from left to right, my left. Ms. Dixon?
No, I do not.
Mr. Muldoon? Ms. Brenner? Okay. Mr. Duffield, Mr. Avery?
None.
And I have none. All right, we'll move into items, item number two, status of the general plan update. We'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neil and City Council members. I am Simone Jurgis, your Community Development Director, and with me on my left is Jim Campbell, who is the Deputy Director for Community Development. This is a status update that Councilmember Brenner has asked for, and we're happy to present this and tell you where we're at with the general plan update. So if everybody recalls back in, really it started in 2018, where we talked about doing a general plan update, and it wasn't until January 2019 that the City Council formed the General Plan Update Steering Committee. And the whole purpose of that committee was really a listen and learn, to listen to the community, to learn about what the issues are with the community. They've held 13, they did a lot of work. They held 13 listen and learn engagement meetings. We had an actual workshop at each of your council member districts, and so there was a lot of good interactivity. And if you recall, we had kind of a Lego set identifying where housing units can go throughout the city. At that time, we anticipated that the arena numbers would be about 2,700 units. And later throughout 2019, SCAG put out their number of 4,834, actually it was 32 arena units, and eventually was updated by an additional two. So from that, the steering committee kind of pushed the housing issue back to the City Council. And so in November 2019, the Council, City Council asked us to put together a housing action plan. And it was really a three-pronged approach. It was a legislative solution, a political solution, and a work towards compliance. And you can see on the right-hand side, you know, what we've, this is just a sampling of what we've done with regards to the legislative solution. We've actually drafted an assembly bill, AB 1063, that did not see the light of day, and it got stuck at the Senate Housing Committee up at the state level. We recently filed our appeal of our housing units. We've also filed an appeal against the city of Santa Ana's housing units. With regards to the political solution, we focused a lot of attention talking to our local legislators, talking to other City Council members who are kind of going through this, the same experience with this unheard of high housing units. And we've garnered a lot of support, and we've talked to HCD. So there's a lot of work being done at the political level. At the same time, we're working towards compliance, and that is our Housing Element Advisory Committee. So that, in 2019, you gave us the charge of creating the housing action plan, and we've satisfied that action plan. Now, we're going to fast forward just a little bit, and this was really the pivotal moment in January 2020, this is this year, pre-COVID, where we pivoted and focused solely on housing compliance. Again, a reminder, 4,800, planning for 4,800 units, that is a large, large number. It's the largest number in the history of the city of Newport Beach. That is four decades worth of development, kind of getting shoved into the next eight years. That, in January 2020, the City Council adopted a resolution number six there. And what that did, it really paused the general plan update process, and it dissolved the steering committee. It formed the Housing Element Advisory Committee, and there's 10 members, and Mayor O'Neil is our ex officio member there. They've been doing a lot of work on this housing element, and we've directed all the city resources towards solely focusing on the housing element. When I say city resources, I'm talking about the staff that's involved. I'm talking about the money that's being poured into it. And when you have 10 members of the steering committee, you know, that's, they're volunteering their time. Out of the 10-member committee there, you know, they formed five subcommittees, and three of those subcommittees are focusing on housing location. One subcommittee is working on affordable housing, and another subcommittee is doing, is focusing on outreach. They're working hard. This is a major, major task for us, a major endeavor, to figure out where to put 4,800 housing units. So what does that look like going forward? Where do we get to the general plan? So this is just a kind of a schedule timeline. On the left-hand side is the present time, and then the right-hand side is our deadline of October 2021. And so we have about 11 months left to submit a housing element. Looking just at that, focusing on that top line, you have, we have some workshops there. I'm not going to get into the detail there. I'll talk about it a little bit later. But by March of 2021, we're going to have a draft housing element, and we're going to have to circulate that to the public, and so make sure that we get their public input. We're going to work with HCD and get HCD's input on our draft element. And at the same time, we've got to work on the EIR, and that, that's a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work in a very short amount of time, and we need to focus all of our attention on getting this housing element done by October 2021. At this, on a parallel approach, we're working on the circulation element. And, you know, we have our public work staff, our traffic engineering team, really focusing a lot of attention, and we're utilizing our planning commission as our public forum for that. So I'll talk about a lot of these workshops that we have going on, but I just wanted to kind of share with you that, you know, we have a lot of dates in front of us. We have a lot of work to do and a lot of public engagement that we see coming forward regarding the housing element and the circulation element. So what happens after?
Sorry, just a second. Let's go back for just one slide.
Certainly.
Because it's probably worth noting a little bit more of where we, where we are right now in terms of kind of getting granular. So we've, the Housing Element Subcommittee, the Housing Element Subcommittee has been working through the HCD form. The HCD form is, it's very, it is very granular. It is to the point where when we are going to be submitting this into HCD, it's not enough to say that we plan on putting 1,000 units in, you know, in the airport area, and 1,000 units in this area, and 1,000 units in this other area. They actually require for every assessor's parcel, assessor's parcel number, all the way down to the APN, you have to fill it out for every APN that you plan on using for, for this. And the Housing Element Subcommittee has been working through this, and actually, I would encourage everyone, if they haven't had an opportunity to, to go back and actually watch the most recent Subcommittee meeting, specifically the discussion led on the, that actually, that, that discussion on APN, they went down and actually looked through every, every parcel to find a location for it. They've, how many, how many did they highlight on that, Simone? Quite a few. I just can't remember how many.
Almost 200, at least 200 sites.
Yeah. So they're working through at that granular level, at the Subcommittee level. So I would just encourage folks, if they haven't had an opportunity to go back and look at it, that, at least that portion of the Subcommittee meeting, I would encourage you to go look at it, because that's, that's ultimately where we have to get to for the discussion about HCD, and it's, it's going to be hard. So then, that's not even taking into consideration yet, the Subcommittee that's meeting, the Subcommittee of the, of the Housing Subcommittee, that's meeting to discuss the issues of the affordable housing and the complexities that go along with how to actually increase your housing stock on affordable, which, when that report comes, we'll have an opportunity to present at some point to the Council to have an idea of where we, you know, what, what the options are. But I'm, I'm growing less and less sure that this is a possibility. I didn't think, I didn't think so at the beginning, but I'm sort of getting to that point where, but I'm, I'd like to at least make sure that I'm highlighting for everyone just how incredibly complicated this actually has turned out to be. We thought it would be, and it's turning out to be just as complicated, if not more so. So anyway, that's my encouragement, is to watch the last meeting at least on that particular item. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neil. And to add to that, you made a good point, that finding the sites is the difficult part of this. And from a staff standpoint, we're tasked with getting this housing element done, and that's what we're focusing a lot of our attention. Continuing with kind of a schedule standpoint, again, you know, we're focusing on October 2021. You know, we don't have a lot of room from a staff resource standpoint to do much else besides focus on housing. We see that the, the next stage of this is really focusing on that land use element. The whole point of the housing element, these are policies of, for affordable housing, for housing at all income ranges. At the same time, it identifies these opportunity sites. But the work's not done. Even if you get a housing element done, a developer can't build the project, because your general plan, your land use isn't updated. The housing element is just one piece of this. We will need to add policies to update our land use element, and that's going to be our next stage. And we hear a lot about that kind of master planning for the community, and that's where a lot of this will take place. People are talking about, you know, what about the vote of the electorate? Charter 423, when does that come into place? We believe that that comes to place when you update your land use element, because that is what's going to increase all that density on your zoning, on your general plan. That is where we believe that the land use element is really going to require the vote of the electorate, and that's a separate discussion that, you know, we can definitely have and come back later on. So we feel that by October 21, we could focus on the land use element and the safety element, and I'll talk about what those are. And then, once we get the land use element going, and there's going to be a lot of community input. Everybody has a lot of different thoughts of what that land use element should be. It's not just housing, but it's your commercial, your retail, your office. That's going to be a lot of discussion there. And we believe by, by, by 2022, we could start working on the other elements. And I just listed three of them. And we have other elements, but you know, harbor, recreation, noise. This is all part of our general plan. That's a part of our general plan update. So we're looking at more of a phased approach, really from just a resource standpoint. You know, we just, we just need to be hyper-focused on our housing right now. Then we could focus on land use, and then start tying in all our other elements.
So hang on just a second. Mr. Avery.
Simone, just in general sense, in your mind, how much of this would be single-family homes? I think just for people to understand where we're...
I think, I think the single-family homes is going to be a very small part of this.
Right.
It's not going to be a big number. And again, it's, you know, we haven't, we haven't focused, the Housing Committee hasn't focused attention on single-family.
Right.
They've been focusing all their attention on where we can get the best bang for the buck, which is your higher dense, medium to high density, 30 units per acre, 40 units per acre. You know, they haven't even gone to looking at anywhere on the peninsula, or the islands, or West Newport.
Sure.
It's just, there's no room. There's no room. Unless, unless the Council feels that we have to upzone these areas. And then when you upzone, you're going to lose your single-family neighborhoods. You know, the single-family, you get torn down, you have duplexes. We just haven't even had that discussion. We just don't want to get there yet.
Well, it could possibly, a lot of it could look something similar to Uptown Newport, kind of thing?
The Uptown Newport is a very clear model of what housing is going to look like in the future, if this housing element gets certified, and once we update our land use element. Those medium-density podium-style projects are going to be the norm.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, to be fair, though, to the point being made, because of the way that the reporting is required on the APN level, even if we said, and just to be clear at home, we're not saying this, even if we said, you know, we're going to look at Bellbo Island, it's not like you could do an Uptown Newport project on the island.
Right.
I mean, you could, you could barely even do it, you know, you, at best, at most, you could take a parcel and say, well, you might add another unit. But, I mean, good luck getting to 4,800 that way.
Right.
Right? So, because how many people on the island are going to be actually doing that? That's, I mean, that's the problem with getting down into the APN granular level. I understand they want it for accountability, but, okay, I guess, that's, that's, okay. All right, anyway. Go ahead.
So let's talk about the land use element. You know, we've heard a lot from the community about, you know, we, first, we need to master plan our communities. We need to plan our airport area before you put housing. And from a staff standpoint, we absolutely agree. You know, you want to have a plan first before you do anything. But right now, things have changed. We have an enormous amount of housing units we have to plan for. It is the tail wagon, the dog. We have to focus on where these housing sites are going to be. As the mayor said, those APN numbers. What are those APN numbers? Once we identify that through our housing element, then we can pivot and focus on land use element and start doing that master planning. Housing is just one component of land use. You still have your retail component. We still have our, a robust office inventory here that we don't want to lose. We do have a need for light industrial. So all these areas of what we've talked about as far as, you know, how do we plan our future, we can do all this through our land use element. And these are policies that we add to the land use element, through land use, through zoning, if you want to bring in experts in. We can do all that, all through this. One caveat is, you know, if we, if we do any amendments to that land use more than the housing, we're going to have to do another EIR. Again, we have to comply with CEQA. We're going to do it for the housing element. And if we do anything more than housing in the land use element, if the Council wants, or if the community wants more retail, we're going to have to do another EIR. So this is all cost and time, and that's why I bring this up. And the safety element, it's, it's becoming more and more important. It is now law. We have climate change. You know, we are experiencing all the wildland fires we have to address. We know FEMA has updated the flood, the flood maps. We, we know the earthquake and liquefaction areas. And we, you know, sea level rises are our biggest issue. And we, we feel from a staff standpoint, sea level rise is just as important as housing is. And, you know, that is, needs to get addressed. You know, we're, we're updating our bulkheads or seawalls, but what are we going to do about the coast? You know, and that's really important for our property owners and for the city. So that needs to get fleshed out, too. We've got to do a vulnerability assessment, and that's going to be done through the safety element. That's why we have it scheduled for October 2021. And then what's important to understand is, nothing is cheap. Everything costs money. So we, so far, we have about 2.3 million set aside to be working on those elements. I've talked about housing, circulation, land use. We've uncovered about 1.6 million, so we have about $600,000 left. If there is a desire to do a lot more work on that land use element, if we want more experts, urban planners, if we want, you know, designs and 3D renderings, you know, it's going to cost money. And so I just, I'm just putting it out there for the Council's knowledge that, you know, if we're going to do a robust analysis on, throughout the land use element, or throughout the remainder elements of the general plan, it's, it's just going to cost more money for us. Depending on what we do to the land use element, we may have to do another EIR, and that's another half a million dollars to do. So, you know, we anticipate the cost is, I don't know, somewhere between two and a half and three and a half million dollars. And, you know, and I don't want to keep coming back to Council asking for more and more money. But I think the money in this, the cost of the EIR, the cost of the general plan update, you know, that, that's significant, that we need to make sure that the Council's fully aware of this.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going back in my memory. When we were proceeding with the general plan update before all the Rena activities started, weren't we talking about a total project cost of approximately $4 million?
Actually, the project cost was two and a half million for doing everything at the same time and doing one EIR. We projected about two and a half million, and that's what we shared with the Council in 2019.
I don't know where I got the 4 million. Another question. What in, in the world of, the universe of your colleagues in other cities and planning departments, how are they approaching this? I do hear that some cities are not doing anything. I think the city of Newport Beach should be commended, because we are doing the responsible compliance at a great cost. But what do you hear?
So everybody's clearly different. Not everybody can afford to hire consultants. There are some agencies that are doing the housing element update in-house, and they feel that they can tackle it in-house. They either have land to do it, or they're just going to add every single policy in the world to their housing element. We know Huntington Beach is, they've gotten the SB 2 funds and the LEAP grants of about half a million dollars. So their housing element cost is about a half a million dollars, so that's how they're going to handle that. City of Irvine has been working on their general plan for a long time, and now they're in pause because of Rena, and they're, they're suffering the same fate as we are. They're hiring their housing consultants, too. And some agencies don't update their general plan. My last agency I worked for, their, their land use element was from 2000, from 1996. They don't plan to update it. And, you know, some agencies do that, and how they get around it is that they just do specific plans everywhere. They just never touch their general plan. So every, every agency is different. This community, this Council, we're much more proactive with our general plan, and so we're doing a lot of work in a very short amount of time.
Could you go back to the prior slide?
Certainly.
On the calendar. So, well, maybe it's the one before. Excuse me, I'll keep going on the timeline. Okay. So I like what you're putting here in the sense that once you wrap up the housing element, the circulation element is, is starting, at the, you'll do a handoff and go right into the land use element, because as we will be talking, and I guess in this item now, there's certain demands on all of us to short-circuit the general plan process and be looking at certain parts of the city for certain new development land use, uses. And so just to get an understanding of the timing on the land use element, I'm glad that you will, it looks like you're going to start this a year from now, or maybe third, third quarter, early fourth quarter 2021. And then, by the time it takes to get the committee organized and applicants for volunteers and that type of thing, it's going to take several months to get it up and running. So I commend you for doing that. So it looks like that's your intent, is also with the safety element, to get those started kind of in a relay fashion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
And I want to say that I think we, we've gotten kind of wrapped up here. We talked about the funding sources, and then, going to make a harmless plug here, we do have two workshops coming up Monday and Tuesday. You know, we, we're looking for community engagement on the housing element. So November 16th, November 17th, 6:00 PM, it's a, it's a virtual Zoom interaction. This is where we're going to take public comments from the community, and we're looking, we need public comments. We need the, we're really pushing out a lot of social media. We're doing a lot of flyers. We really want to engage the community. These dates are very, very important for the city, for the residents. You know, we need to hear their voices. You know, our Housing Committee meetings are public, but we're not getting a big turnout out of these Housing Committee meetings. These are virtual workshops. You can do it from home. Please go ahead and register at NewportTogether.com. And we already have about 70 people have already registered for these two workshops, or hopefully we can break 100, we're hoping for. And I believe that's going to conclude our presentation. Thank you.
So before we get there, let's talk a little bit about what we're doing on a couple of other fronts. So we were talking about the general plan update process from the perspective of the Subcommittee, but I'd like you to talk a little bit about what we're doing on the legal front as well. Could you talk about the appeal?
Certainly. So we filed, the City Council authorized staff to go ahead and draft an, an appeal to the Rena numbers. And the, the main crux of our appeal is, is really twofold. One, it is very constrained to be in Newport Beach. We're a coastal city. We're in the coastal zone. We're subject to a lot of regulations with regards to the Coastal Commission and the Coastal Act. Second, we have John Wayne Airport, and they have their own land use plan, and they have their height restrictions. So those two are kind of our main crux. We have liquefaction areas. So it's difficult to put additional housing anywhere in Newport Beach, and, and that's the struggle that we have with Newport. And state law grants us zero flexibility. It grants us no waivers of any of this. It just says you shall plan for 4,800 units. The second crux of our arena appeal is that COVID has hit. You know, we need more time to, to engage with our constituents. We need more time to plan for our cities. And that, that's the major, that's the other part of this, is that there's so much to do in such a little time, that, you know, you almost lose that connection with the community, so you can plan your own destiny. So that is one route that we're going. City of Santa Ana has, has, has planned for and entitled a lot of housing units, and...
Can you say how many? Because it's huge.
So they're, they've planned for at least, I mean, this is entitled projects for at least 10,000 units, right? And their Rena is 3,000, right? So there's a gap of at least, at least 7,000 units for, for the city of Irvine. If it wasn't for that, their, their natural Rena would be probably 20,000 units. They only got 3,000 because they're a disadvantaged community, and that state law allows that. And so we recognize that. We don't want to, you know, hurt City of Santa Ana. But City of Santa Ana is entitled 10,000 units. So let their Rena not be the 20,000 plus thousand, but just let it be the 10,000 units. So if they can absorb another 7,000 units, that will reduce our Rena by at least 200 units, if not more. So that's really important to us. So we have definitely challenged our Rena, City of Santa Ana's Rena, and so that's very important. The, the next item is, Mayor O'Neil signed a letter to, for SCAG, is they're going to form a litigation committee. You know, Southern California region has been allocated 1.3 million housing units. So the question's being asked is, where did that number come from? You know, 1.3 million units is a lot of units. And when you compare it to what the feds have looked at, as what is the housing needs of California in its nature, that's 800,000 units just for the entire state, where, where HCD said for Southern California, it's 1.3 million units. So there's a complete disparity between what the state's doing and what the federal government's looking. So we've asked SCAG to form a litigation committee to look at this difference, and is there an opportunity to file litigation? And I think that's something that I think all cities and Councilmembers are going to be asking the question about. What do we do? How do you justify 1.3 million housing units? And the state can't. I don't think they can. They haven't done it so far. So...
On that point, let me just briefly jump in. The SCAG representative on this issue is, is a Councilmember up in Yorga Linda named Peggy Wong. Peggy had invited a, a letter from our city directly to them to not just, not only request litigation committee, but also ask us to request legislation at SCAG's request through, to, to the legislature. So it's two components. One was the litigation Subcommittee. I think they've formed it. I think, I believe they've formed it, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
So that's, that's positive news that, you know, City of Newport Beach is, I wouldn't say we're leading on, but we certainly are helping the cause on that one. The other, the other aspect of this is the idea that, the example being used is that of Banning Ranch. So Banning Ranch is approved by the, by, the city goes through review at the Coastal Commission, and it's denied. And the question is, if something like that were to happen again, would those units count toward Newport Beach's Rena number, or would they not? And so Councilmember Wong asked to, his, his believes that if a city like ours were to have something like that denied by another state agency, that it should count, and has asked SCAG to advance legislation to that effect. So, so at her request, I, we submitted in a letter asking for that legislation to be advanced by SCAG. No, no, no update on that at all, but I wanted to at least provide that information, because we, we had said at the very beginning of this that we were going to be going down those three paths, and I wanted to make sure I was updating Council on how we're going down those other two paths right now. So we're continuing to push back legally. We're continuing to push back legislatively, and we're trying really hard at the Subcommittee level to find a path forward. Awfully difficult, as you're hearing right now. And then, I know we're talking about the other, the other elements as well, so I didn't, obviously, I don't think that we should be ignoring any of these. We're just, we're right now being put in a really tight spot by, by, by some legislation. Anyway, so I wanted to at least highlight, though, on the housing element, where, a little bit more on where we were on those other two paths. I appreciate the, the update on where we were on the third path.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, Ms. Dixon, then Ms. Brenner.
Oh, go ahead if she pushed the button.
Okay.
Well, just a quick question. Was this an executive order, or was this legislation that, and SCAG and their authority? I mean, with the recent Superior Court action decision questioning the, the authority of the governor, I don't know if it applies, but it, it just seems that now there's suddenly some avenues to question executive orders and these mandates, and it's not really enabled through legislation?
So, you know, I don't believe it was an executive order from the governor for these housing units. It was, it does, does come down from HCD, and how HCD came with that number, that, that's kind of the unknown. We don't, we don't know how they justified that number.
Yeah. This, this one was legislation followed by, legislation followed by administrative agency policy, and was not, was not at the behest of an executive order. Yeah, I understood exactly where you were going with that. Ms. Brenner.
Simone, we've approved, what, close to 1,000 units in our recent actions, so that our number should be reduced by a significant amount.
I'm going to have Deputy Director answer that question.
Ms. Brenner, yes, we have approved two projects most recently, and one is under review right now, coming forward to the Council. If you total all that up, it is probably a little over, if we cloud all three of them, it would be over 1,000 units. In, in two cases, they'll have some affordable housing component, even in the third project, it has an affordable housing component. So we'll be able to take those projects, because they won't be occupied before June 30th of this upcoming year. We'll be able to include those in our Rena. So that, that is some progress towards attaining some of those goals.
So that's a little bit of progress. And then if we succeed on any of our lawsuits, we could hopefully reduce it by a little bit more. The, the thing that I'm concerned about is the Housing Element Committee is doing a great job... great job and boy, Larry has them on task and they are, are really, you know, getting the numbers down and the properties, the specific properties. But I'm concerned that we're not looking at our potential ADUs or even subdivisions. Like we approved a subdivision on Santiago a couple of meetings ago. And I'm just wondering if we were able to ascertain out there in the community where there might be, I mean, maybe there's 1,000 more units that we could use that would lower our number even more. So, and it doesn't seem like we have anybody really looking at that right now.
You know, we, we haven't focused on those subdivisions. Again, it's really the, the site inventory that the housing committee's been focusing on, the, the best bang for the buck, I guess you would say. You know, where can you put the most density? With regards to the subject of ADUs, we, we know we could get some credit for ADUs. It's in their guidelines with regards to this housing element. The, the question mark is how much credit can we get for ADUs? We, what we've heard is if the city plans to take an enormous amount of credit, then there's going to be performance benchmarks set by HCD. So hypothetically, if we want to take credit for 1,000 units, they're like, okay, well you better measure that and you better track it. And if you can't, if you're not hitting your target of say 120 ADUs a year, then you're going to have to make that, those RENA number units up somewhere else. So that's kind of the unknown. HCD has said, sure, you can use ADUs, but you know, propose a program. So we're working on that program. That's what our consultants are doing. We just, we, we need to exhaust that site inventory first and make sure that we've covered everything as far as sites go for this higher density before we get to that, that ADU level.
I mean, we're, we're going to be pushed to approve big, high-density projects that I just am concerned that we don't find more than we absolutely have to because we haven't looked at these other areas where we could decrease our numbers. So that's one of the things that I was concerned about. And there's also a study that shows that the California population is decreasing and that people are actually leaving California. And are we including that in our, in our argument?
I think that's a very good point that you've just made is that the population that we've noticed is, has decreased. You know, it's, again, we have a, a draft RENA number of 4,800. You know, we, we didn't put the population decline in our arena appeal, but I think that's a good point that you're making.
There are legitimate studies that are showing that. So, and, and I guess you said, you know, we need voices. So I'm very concerned that we're going to get to the point where we have a plan and the community is just not on board with it. And I, I've been to, I think, three or four of our, of our outreach meetings and I've watched the housing committee meetings on television and, you know, I'm paying a lot of attention to that, but I don't feel like we're getting the buy-in from the community that we really need to get. And that's where I was concerned about us dissolving the, the steering committee was that it seemed like that was kind of their focus was really involved. And, and in the past, when we've done a general plan update, we've had a lot of community participation in those. And it seems like that's how you get to the point where people are going to be okay with something like this, is if they really get to participate. I, I don't want to be critical of those outreach meetings because I think the consultants and everybody's trying as hard as they can, but there's not much interaction. I mean, there's PollMe, which I love PollMe, and I've told Grace I'd love to be able to use PollMe for event, activities that we have up here where people could, we could submit a poll question out to the community and have them, people buy in. But, but the questions are very structured. There's not, there's not, and COVID is very limiting because you can't just get people together to brainstorm and talk. But what I'd like to see is our community getting excited about some of these redevelopment areas. And I think that that could happen, for instance, in West Newport. You know, that could be a really exciting area where people are always talking about how wonderful Corona Damar is, that you can walk to everything. Well, if you develop something like that in West Newport, you could have people excited about living in those condos or Newport Crest or whatever because they could walk to that. And I just don't think we're getting the excitement. We're focused on pushback because we don't like being told what to do. But, but at the same time, it feels like we're missing an opportunity to get the community excited about some things that maybe they will like and maybe we will be able to do in the future and actually have happen. So I'm just concerned about that. But I also am concerned about the community complaining about the master plan and that there's, you know, when we approve a project, they always say we're doing it piecemeal. And I don't think we are, but we don't have something to show them that say, well, this is where the retail is going to go. And I know we don't have staff to do the general plan update steering committee right now, but it does seem like that we could have a community group that would be continuing to meet and talk about these things. And then if they had something that they really wanted us to focus on, they could, and I, I mentioned to Grace, even if it were something like the Corona Damar bid, we have just Melanie that comes. It's not a big staff commitment, but we have Melanie that comes to those meetings and she keeps us on, on target and she answers questions about what's legal with the city and what's not. And there's a lot of brainstorming that goes on at those meetings. So I feel like we're missing an opportunity there. And I know Susan DeSantis, who is on our housing element update advisory committee, has done a lot of work as far as visioning goes and the technology available to do plans like that. And I was hoping that, I don't know if she's here, but that she would be able to tell us a little bit about that because Larry is focused on locating sites and he has said to her in those meetings that she needs to bring that to city council and have us be the ones that determine whether that's something we should do moving forward.
All right, Mr. Avery.
Yeah, Simone, yeah, let's take an area like West Newport. It's all private property, right?
That's correct.
And small, relatively small parcels.
Right.
And, and so we do a, you know, we change the zoning, but the way, we, we're not going to get everybody to hop at the same time. So the, the way we're going to do it, right, is going to, we have to, it's got to be set up in a certain way that will encourage development. There's no other way to do it. We're not going to eminent domain land and try to.
Right. It's all, it's all controlled by the private markets.
Right.
You know, and you make a good point, and council member Avery, is that, you know, we, we need the, the property owners to have a stake in this and they have to have a say in this too. And that, that's really important.
Yeah. And so I think for a lot of, a lot of people, myself included, it's, it's depressing to think about this, adding this many units in Newport when we, we've all been concerned about growth. We've all been concerned about circulation, traffic, and what it means to our neighborhoods and the beach and the peninsula in summer. The, what's going on in the Great Park area is, you know, is an example, kind of, probably even a lower level example compared to what we've got to do in terms of, of scale and heights. But it's, it's difficult. But I think, I, I do think that's the first step is to, not the first step, it, an important step is to, it's got to be appealing enough for, for at least the property owners and developers to, to buy into. And it's got to work for the low income side of it. And that's going to be tough because that land is so valuable, right? So mathematically, it's, have, have we produced a model yet on a smaller scale that would work?
No. I mean, we, we're starting to see the projects that are coming forward. I mean, they're 5% affordable of the number of units inside a project.
Right.
Because, because as you said, the, the land is so expensive, it's hard to make this pencil. So, you know, Mr. Campbell and I have been discussing it and Sheri Tucker have been discussing too. You may, you may, sometimes you may, you may have to actually over-design and over-zone.
Right.
Just to, to make up those, that little difference, that gap.
And that's the last thing we want to do.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion before we go to public? Okay. We'll go to members of the public. We'll start in community room and go right ahead.
Hello, Nancy Gardner. When the animals in Animal Farm revolted, one of the things they wrote up on the board of the barn was all animals are created equal. And then sometime later, when they went in, they were surprised to see, oh, all animals are created equal, except some animals are created more equal than others. And this is what's happening with the, our general plan is that these two elements, and I'm not quarreling about they have to be done, but they are going to be more dominant. They're going to put us into certain corners. And I would hope that we could start to not review, not redevelop the new, these elements that we're not working on yet, but that we would have some group, whether we added to the, the current housing element committee, a couple of people that would focus on this, or whether we ask SPON or some group, because they've put so much time into, into the, the general plan preparation, that would look at things like the harbor element and the natural resources element and the recreation element and just say, wait, 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 here are some policies and, and while you're doing this, they should be considered. I think that would give a lot of people a, a greater sense of, of comfort as we go forward in this very difficult journey that we're on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll go to the next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Hua Yan. Yep. I think there are just, this is really complicated. So many good points you guys made there. I want to start with Joyce's point, point that we should bring some excitement to the community. So, you know, I have been participating in this since day one last year with the general plan update committee. And the participation just went smaller and smaller in the community. And I partially think, this is not a blame because I fully understand the difficulty we have, the difficult decision the city made last year. But it just, housing element doesn't seem to be exciting enough, does not draw a variety of people. So I sent in a comment on Irvine's work. So it's interesting to hear from the community development director that Irvine actually started general plan update earlier than we did. But anyway, so they are working on multiple paths. Yesterday, after our water quality committee meeting, I zoomed into their environmental committee meeting. So they were talking about fire, urban forestry, fire, and I was not sure where they were going. Turned out it was actually a safety element in the general plan update. And they were talking about using algorithms for trees. And the, the written comment I sent in there, there are three other, three things that committee forwarded to the city council tonight that's transportation and the land use, buildings, energy. They got a lot of community engagement there. Honestly, I just have to tell myself, I think actually, I tell myself, maybe I'm biased, I say Newport actually has more passion, we can get it done better. But I, I just hope that we can figure out a way to go in multiple paths moving forward. I mean, you, this sea level rise, fires, climate change, these are real problem. Now getting the community excited to participate, this is a problem. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Susan DeSantis and it's my pleasure to serve on the housing element update committee. I would like to just make some observations. I'm not going to reiterate what council member Brenner has said or any of the other comments by the council members. There's good reason for the direction that the city is taking with its three-pronged approach and for the focus on the site inventory. And I can certainly empathize with the city staff on the level of effort that is going into just moving forward on the two elements that are underway at this time. So the challenge is, and I, I think there's been a tremendous amount of effort and diligence put into doing the site inventory by the committee, and there still is a tremendous amount of work left to, to do. The community will get a glimpse into it at these two workshops coming up. I think the challenge, which has been brought forward, for example, at the planning commission hearing last Thursday on the Piscern project, which is an excellent project and could serve potentially as a prototype for other development within the airport area, is that it appears to the community that things are being looked at on a site-by-site basis. And even at the upcoming workshops, the community is going to be asked to look at individual sites and be able to provide comments on them without having a broader vision or understanding of what the possibilities are within different opportunity areas. And so obviously there's a dilemma here because I don't know personally, and I've been engaged in this type of planning for many years now, I don't know how you generate support from within the community for the housing element without the vision for this number of units in this community. So what I wanted to suggest, and I don't know how it gets accomplished, but I see other communities in the state who are engaging in creative thinking about the future. And they're looking at new ways of doing things. And if there's a way to interject some of that now, I think it would be very important. It was mentioned at our housing committee meeting last week that there's an excellent example of the new Google campus that is being built in the city of San Jose that's going to, in partnership with the city, which is going to revitalize the downtown and encompass over 80 acres. And they're going to be focusing in on new ways of doing things. It's, it's not going to be a typical campus. And it's going to reflect the post-COVID environment. There are things happening in downtown Los Angeles, for example, where they are taking all the surface parking lots and they're covering them with parks and greenery and putting the parking underground. I had an opportunity earlier this week to interview the mayor of the city of Ontario, which is turning into a significant hub for freight through the Ontario airport. They are having conversations with Elon Musk about how to put underground tunnels that would move people from the Rancho Cucamonga Metrolink station, which is the last station on that line, to the airport. And also underground tunnels that would move freight from the airplanes to the warehouse and distribution centers that are proliferating at the airport because of e-commerce. So there are things happening that are really different, really exciting, and would generate interest and participation by the community if they were part of this process. And so what I am proposing is that we figure out a way to make that happen. If may, I may have another minute. If I may have another minute?
Yeah, and also, you're part of the outreach team for the Housing Subcommittee, if I recall correctly. So, go ahead.
Okay. So I did send over a couple of PowerPoint slides. And it was late in the day today, so I don't know if you've received it. But what the slides illustrate is an example of 3D modeling. You could take an area like the airport area and you could create a three-dimensional model. And you would be able to look at densities, for example. And within different scenarios, you could create multiple scenarios. And you could be able to show what the output would be for different densities. This example, and I don't know if the video, it doesn't look like the video is part of this, is it? There was a YouTube video if you--
Apparently not.
Okay. The video allowed you to walk through the community at a particular density level. You could have, you could have several alternatives that would help the community understand what it is we're talking about. If you put 1,000 units or 2,000 units in the airport area, what does that look like? What does it mean? What are the impacts? The city has developed a VMT calculator as part of its work on the circulation element. You would be able to look at a scenario, for example, that had a certain density. Let's say it were predominantly five-story buildings, such as the Pacern development that was approved by the Planning Commission. You could look at what that would be for building upon the site inventory that the Housing Element Update Committee has been working on. You could create the model based on the properties and the information that has been garnered through that effort. And based on realistic cost estimates, to be able to project what the housing output would be at different density levels. You'd be able to run the VMT calculator and be able to understand what the congestion impacts would be. You could be able to identify what the affordable housing output would be at different levels and what subsidies would be required to be able to create those units. So it is possible with the newer technologies to be able to create these models, to be able to bring the community in to help in the visioning process and to allow them to participate in a way that they might get excited about and might see opportunities. Well, just one other example, and this came from talking with another member of the Housing Element Update Committee, who used to work for the Irvine Company. And he said when they developed the four-season, the plans for the four-season hotel, it included underground tunnels, which is, it's just interesting because that was a long time ago. But there was a way of looking at what we have today a little differently. So in any event, that's what I wanted to say, that if there's a way to do it, I hope that we can make it happen now. Because I think that's what it's going to take to get the community excited and engaged in this. And I'm not sure what you end up with at the end of having a realistic site inventory without bringing the community along and having a broader than the people that typically get involved. It needs to engage other community members as well. Thank you very much for listening.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments in the community room?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. First, in response to some of the council questions, I thought it might be helpful to point out that the 1.34 million units was assigned to the SCAG portion of Southern California is not entirely based on projections of population growth in California. If I recall correctly, about half of that assignment was deemed to be needed to relieve existing housing conditions, such as overcrowding, which I find unlikely to apply to Newport Beach, create higher vacancy rates, strangely, and a number of other parameters. Out of that 1.34 million, the 4,834 assigned to Newport Beach, it is very important, as others have pointed out, to realize that's just, it's not just 4,834 units, but those units are broken down by income category. A substantial number of those have to be affordable to low-income families and a substantial number to very low-income families. The director was pointing out that the recently approved projects in the airport area allow only, or providing only 5% of the units would be affordable. He said affordable, it's actually affordable to very low-income units. And he said that would require some overbuilding to make up for the small gap. He said, it's not a small gap, it's an immense gap. If you're only building five units out of 100, you have to overbuild by 20 times. So if the requirement was 1,000 units of very low income, you have to plan to build 20,000 units. So the problem is immensely larger than it seems. As the other speakers have said, I agree that community interest in this is very important. Community participation for that to happen, I think first you and the city staff need to genuinely be interested in what the public has to say. Then you need to make the public feel and understand that you genuinely want to hear from them. And moreover, that you want to hear from them about something in which their opinion is actually going to affect the outcome in some way. I agree that our current website and our current publicity efforts are not generating excitement. These workshops, the virtual workshops, I don't think have been very representative of the public. It's good that we got 70 people signing up for something coming up in a week or, in next week, I guess. But that's 70 people out of 80,000, which is not a very good showing. In former times, when the general plan was updated in the early 2000s, I recall that all the residents received surveys in the mail. Seems kind of low-tech, that did engage people somewhat. Perhaps a more modern hybrid of that is you can send out postcards at less cost, inviting them to do something. But what you're inviting them to do online has to really look exciting and inviting to them, like you really want to know what they have to say and what difference it's going to make. And there's nothing on our website that's doing that now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other public comments in the community room? All right, any calls? All right. Hi, go ahead and mute what you're listening to and then go ahead.
Yes, my, it's David Tanner. And I had a few comments, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, on the item tonight. One, I'd ask that the City Council please clarify the scope of the General Plan Update. We've heard from staff tonight that it's going to be piecemealed, taken in separate components, separate elements. I would note that piecemealing is prohibited by the California Environmental Quality Act. And I would also note that all elements of the general plan must be internally consistent. And that would be a finding that the City Council would have to make if it were to approve a housing element separate from the other elements that we know are going to be required to be amended. Secondly, given our current knowledge of housing opportunities within the city and current housing laws, I suggest the City Council meet and evaluate new strategies to comply with the state housing laws. I don't think the path we're on is going to yield success. Thirdly, it would be very helpful if the City Council instructed staff to describe the existing environmental setting upon general plan buildup prior to asking the public to provide comments. This would mean, what are the effects of the housing laws on the existing general plan? Will our infrastructure be overloaded? And it seems that staff's focus is totally on the 4,800 Rina number and not concentrating at all on the impact of accessory dwelling units, which dwarfs over time the impact of the Rina number. Fourthly, can the city meet, can we use the, excuse me, can the city meet the 2021 HCD deadline for the Housing Element Update? There are agendas going out. Public comments at City's website shows a schedule which indicates we can. I'd like an affirmative answer from what we know today, whether or not we can meet the deadline and provide an approved housing element, an effective housing element to HCD by the deadline in 2021. My fifth comment is, can we provide the option for the public to use the community room for in-person presentation to these workshops? Right now, they're going to be virtual. And my experience with virtual workshops is the availability for community interaction is severely limited by the operator of the Zoom presentation. And my last comment is that the city needs to be cautious about what we propose to HCD because we have seen over the last few years that if we try to limit or work around what the state law is, that the next thing we see is that the state has passed a law to circumvent, to prevent that circumvention. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other calls? All right, last call in the community room? All right, we'll bring it back. Simone, anything you want to respond to during some of the public comments?
You know, we're working hard to get that community engagement. You know, we're putting a lot of resources into our social media outreach, especially for these two workshops on the 16th and 17th. Already, we have up to 70 registrants. And you know, we think we're going to have over 100 on the 16th and 17th. I think that is a good turnout. Even if you had in-person, which we can't do, you know, in-person large gatherings. You know, anytime we had 60, 70 people in our community room, that's a good turnout. So I'm optimistic. You know, I wanted to look at the council and tell the council that we're going to do everything we can in this day and age to make sure that the word gets out to the community. And that's what I've directed staff to do. So we're doing everything we can. I just can't do these big, large community forums in person right now. We have COVID and that's a serious thing. With regards to Mr. Tanner's comments, we understand the piecemealing aspects. We understand we have to be consistent with all the elements of the general plan. And we're working towards that, and we understand that. You know, our direction from the City Council was compliance, and we're doing that. That was the direction by the councils, to focus on getting the housing element done. We know the timeline is tight. We have directed the consultant to put those efforts to meet that timeline. I showed you earlier with a schedule that we'll have a draft by March, and we're sticking to that. We still have the EIR to do. There's a lot of work ahead of us, but we're focusing on doing that. And you know, with regards to what we submit to HCD and you know, how careful we need to be, I think, I think there's going to be a lot of work ahead of us that the public can focus on. I mean, we have an outreach Subcommittee that is going to, you know, be part of that outreach process. That's why the Housing Committee formed that outreach Subcommittee. And Mr. Campbell here and Ben Zadiba and Jaime Mario, they, you know, they work with the Outreach Subcommittee on a regular basis to share their thoughts and ideas, and we get their input.
Who's on that?
Mr. Campbell, on the outreach.
The Outreach Committee is Ms. Susan DeSantis and Debbie Stevens.
Okay, all right.
Hopefully, I answered those questions.
Ms. Dixon, I'm sorry, Ms. Brenner, and then Ms. Dixon.
Simone, I just want to make sure you guys understand how much we appreciate everything you're doing. And we know that you are working, you know, 24/7, it seems like, to get all of this done. And nothing, I hope nothing comes across as criticism because I don't see how our city staff can do any more than they already are doing. I think, you know, some of this maybe is just ways to refine a little bit or way, different ways of looking at it or something that could get us a better result. So one of the things that I'm thinking is our outreach meetings, and this has been since before I was ever on council or even thought of running for council, that I would go to city outreach meetings and I would always be frustrated because they were so controlled. It's like, it's like there really wasn't an opportunity for people to just talk and exchange ideas. And you know, brainstorming is the word that always comes to mind. Like, we've got such expertise in our community that we need to allow people the opportunity to just really talk about all these things. And because each of the, I've been to, I think, three or four of these, and they're very controlled. And I push the buttons and I answer the questions. But that doesn't give me any, even as a council member, that doesn't give me any satisfaction that I've been heard or that my ideas were appreciated or listened to or bounced off other people. And I just, I just think that somehow we need to find ways to let people. And Debbie Stevens and Susan are great at this. So hopefully, they can help our city staff to figure out ways of doing this so that we really do get people revved up about the possibilities and get them to talk to us. Because we really don't want to talk to them as much as we want them to talk back to us.
And to that point, Councilmember Brenner, that is the point of our workshop on Monday and Tuesday. It is going to be that dialogue. People are going to be able to ask questions and talk through their microphone or even type it in. It's going to be less the interactive. We did the interactive, we got the data that we want. But we're really going to be focused on that interactivity where we're going to listen and let the community talk about these sites that we have identified.
Great.
Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. Susan made the comment about, it's really more of a graphic or computer graphics through the visioning, using 3D. And I know the firm that we're using, the communication firm, really has some sophisticated, interactive technology. Are they going to be applying some of this future-type thinking but using the city of Newport Beach and the landmass of city of Newport Beach and helping us think through some creative ideas to? I mean, Ms. Brenner brought up the West Newport industrial area, and we've talked about that. And I think there's, I think it's a great idea to envision that as a new-to-Newport Beach concept of live, work, play. And how is that type of future-type thinking being incorporated in our thought process going forward? Instead of, in addition, not instead of, in addition to looking at, when I participated or just observed one of the last meetings, and so there are different kinds of housing structures stacked and this type and the other thing. But really, getting into the interplay of specific land parcels in Newport Beach and neighborhood parcels that could be envisioned in a unique way to Newport Beach. Anyway, does this firm have that capability to bring that software capability into the discussion?
So I think those are great ideas and a great way to approach, you know, this issue with housing. So as far as, do they have the technology? You know, they'll have to sub it out to an outside--
Sure, but they could obtain it somehow.
They could obtain it. I think what's really important for everybody to understand is that we are struggling with identifying housing sites. You know, that is the key crux of it. If I look at it as that if I had a lot of options on how I could put housing in, I think it'll be a great approach to start focusing on that 3D rendering and that visual fly-in. I can't even get to that because we're still working on, you know, do we have enough sites? And as the mayor, you know, made comments earlier that, you know, this is harder than it looks. So, and-- So, and, and the, the other thing, too, is that we just, I don't have a ton of time to put all these renderings together. What I'm focusing on, let's identify the sites, let's identify the policies, let's do the EIR, and let's get this done by October 2021. Nobody can build these units, even if the housing element has been updated. We still have to update the land use element, and that's where we can do a lot of that visual simulation, that 3D rendering, that master planning that everybody's looking for.
Well, I guess we'll just, I mean, 70 people participating, to me, that sounds like a good number, and it maybe it will continue to drive in additional new interest. Okay, thank you.
All right. Seeing no further, we appreciate this. We'll continue, obviously, to be monitoring this and having longer and more robust conversations as we move forward. So, thank you. All right. With that, we will move into public comments on agenda, non-agenda items. So we'll start in the community room.
Good evening again. Hi, Yen-Yip. So this comment is sort of related to the last one. First, I really want to say thanks to staff for, particularly the staff that gets involved with the General Plan Update Committee and other Housing Committee. It is really a lot of work. Then, taking that from a tangent, they were smart, had a subbing the circulation element to a different entity, the Planning Commission, so now I feel like I sort of, I'm sort of entitled to make a similar suggestion. I think we could use the resources more effectively, since there will be more new committees, and some of the current committee probably will go through some kind of reform, or improvement, or leadership change, things like that. I have been here for almost four years, so I want to share a few points on how to run a committee meeting ineffectively. Number one, this is a COVID time, so if we always meet on a Thursday, and suddenly, this month we're meeting on a Monday, next month we're going to meet on a Tuesday, then you're really playing a trick with committee members and the public to lessen participation. Number two, meeting in person during COVID and not providing the Zoom option as promised, that's another minus. Number three, there is a committee member on a committee has not been coming to meetings since early 2019, and another committee member comes to about a third of the meetings, and so their absence counts towards no quorum. And even if there's a quorum, most of the time, there's no agenda package, so you have to read through all this stuff at the desk at the meeting, so if you can't make a decision then, there's always the next meeting. So these are the things we shouldn't be doing, which means there's a room for improvement for the, how the city operates, the committees. That's my two cents. I've been repeatedly told I need to be patient, so I finally lost my patience. I'm venting now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of City Council. My name is Nancy Scarborough. During my involvement in the city, and especially during my campaign, I've had many occasions to interact with staff. Regarding the dismissal of our Finance Director, while I realize that this is a personnel issue, and it cannot be discussed openly in public, it has come to my attention recently that there may be more than one staff person to be concerned about. Several members have made statements in my presence alluding to difficult work environment. The recent dismissal of our Finance Director, a 29-year employee, Dan Matsuchevich, I'm sure I got that wrong, is a wake-up call to the residents that something is amiss at City Hall. We are reminded of the way Dave Kiff was treated when some members of the council wanted him replaced several years ago. I urge you to open an investigation into the, into what has transpired here, so that the balance of the staff can believe in your desire to do the right thing for them and for the community. Additionally, I ask you to continue negotiations with Dan M. until such time as you've determined what is going on within the city management. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay. Anybody have any calls? All right. Without a closed session, we're going to stand at recess until 6 o'clock for the regular meeting. Thank you.
Welcome back to the November 10, 2020 City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Hurdman is absent.
All right. Without a closed session, we have no closed session report. Let's see, I don't think I've done it in a while. I'll do the invocation, and Mr. Muldoon, if you could do the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Please stand and remain standing after the invocation. Lord, we thank you for this gathering. We thank you for the ability to meet in a free country. We thank you for the ability to make decisions and, and represent our community. We ask that you watch over our men and women who are in the front lines, and we ask that you watch over those people who are working at hospitals. We ask that you watch over those people who are sick. We ask that you get them better. We ask that you watch over those people who are healthy. Please keep them that way. And as we move forward tonight, Lord, we ask that you give us patience and wisdom and guide us through our decisions. In these things, we ask thy name. Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
All right. We'll move now into City Council announcements and oral reports from City Council and committee activities. This is also the time to request a matter for future agenda under A1. All right. Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have an announcement, but I do have, well, I do have an announcement. I don't have a, a committee meeting to report. It gives me great pleasure to announce to the community about a special recognition to one of our city's newest restaurants. Fable and Spirit, located in Lido Village, has received the prestigious Michelin Discovery Award by the Michelin Guide, one of 25 in California, and one of two in Orange County, and I think only one in, the only one in Newport Beach. Located in Lido Village, Fable and Spirit quotes the Guide, Michelin Guide, "With its elegant design and backdrop of the sparkling sea, the fabled spot doesn't have to try that hard to win fans, and yet it never rests solely on its good looks. The room is packed with an unmistakable hum of happy diners diving into delicious pub grub." I want to offer my congratulations to Darren and Jean Coyle and their family. It's a family operation, who own Fable and Spirit. They've worked hard, very hard, to bring their latest restaurant to great success in Newport Beach. They've been open since 2019, and they and their staff have received notable awards, also including Chef and Restaurant of the Year for 2020 by Orange Coast Magazine. So we're very proud of their success and what they bring to our community for fine dining. Congratulations, Darren and Jean and team. So just wanted to do a shout-out to let everyone know what a great restaurant, we restaurants, one of many great restaurants we have in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Newport Beach, I believe, strives to increase access to the harbor on a regular basis. I'd like to A1 at a future council meeting, discussion about installing a disabled transfer lift at Marina Park. This will allow access for wounded veterans and disabled voters. The funds have been secured to fund the transfer lift, which is a, a mechanism you've probably seen frequently at other locations, and pay for the installation as well, and it's exciting to see what the future could bring for the sailing component as well. But I would like staff to, and I'll give them all the details off the dais, figure out if this can be done at Marina Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brenner.
Yes, I had a, a meeting with constituents, with Dave Webb and Damon Soros of the Police Department, and Micah Martin, and Tony Bryne, and residents that live near Carnation and forth, because they continuing problem with truck traffic at all hours of the day and night on the residential streets there. And we also talked about potential solutions for the numerous trash trucks that are continually at our local restaurants, and we're glad that they're, they're picking up the trash, but it's also creating a, a big problem for all the people that live nearby. So Dave has some ideas for that, that we'll be bringing to our, our trash committee. And then today, I, I got to substitute for Mayor O'Neill at a Orange County Transportation Authority meeting of South County Transportation with electeds, and they talked about so many things. It was really interesting, and Dave, I tried to remember, I, I wrote notes at the time and then left them at home, so I tried to do a, a list here, but they were talking about the 73 in Newport Coast, and, and that's one of the things that we'll be looking at if there's any way that we can help to encourage people to use the toll road there. But they kept talking about multimodal, different ways of transportation. They were talking about Measure M money that contributes to community circulators. They talked about, really, a lot of talk about bike and golf, and golf carts, and they were talking about, they have the same problem on some of their sidewalks and bike paths that we have with the boardwalk, where the numerous types of vehicles and pedestrians that are trying to use all these together are having real similar issues to what we're having to deal with. So I think it's an interesting group, and I look forward to being able to find out, you know, what they're doing in these cases that can possibly help us. We also talked a lot about neighborhood electric vehicles, and both electric bikes and golf carts, and ways of finding the, so that golf carts could utilize our city streets more so to enable residents to use those instead of having to get their cars out all the time. And there was a lot of talk about parking in coastal zones and ways of encouraging people not to bring their cars to the beach, parking lots, and various ways, transportation that could allow people to get to the beach without bringing their cars. So that was an interesting discussion. So those are just a few of the things that they were talking about, but I look forward to future meetings with this group, because we do have a lot of similar issues.
Thank you very much. Mr. Duffield. Mr. Avery.
Just one, Mr. Mayor. I attended the annual, the monthly meeting of the Orange County Sanitation District Board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I was able to attend Huntington Beach's Homeless Navigation Center ribbon-cutting at the request of Mayor Lynn Semet over there, and I'm glad to see them working regionally with, within. It's, it's good to go over and support them. We've got a couple of slides. One of them is for our, for it to come up. There you go. So on November 16th and November 17th, we've got our Housing Suitability Virtual Workshops, Parts One and Two. You can register at the NewportTogether.com website. This is for our general plan updates, specifically the housing and circulation elements. The circulation element, Planning Commission meeting is going to be on November 19, I'm sorry, excuse me, our Planning Commission meeting, where they will be discussing the circulation element, is on November 19th at 6:30, and then we will have a virtual workshop on November 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. discussing the circulation element. So please go to NewportTogether.com for registration and more information. We'll go to the next slide. And tomorrow is Veterans Day, as well as, by the way, our council member Diane Dixon's birthday, but far more people will probably be celebrating Veterans Day. So tomorrow is Veterans Day. To all of our veterans, near and far, we most certainly thank you for your service. And City Hall and most of our city facilities will be closed tomorrow in observance of our holiday. So with that, oh, excuse me, Ms. Dixon, I apologize. I need to come back to you.
That's a funny, I forgot to mention, I'm having a District One Town Hall on Thursday, November 19th, a Zoom Town Hall at 5:00 p.m. The list of tentative agenda items are, these are the proposed ones at this point. I want to update the community, District One, on boardwalk safety enforcement, to really update everyone where we are. Some, Chief Lewis will be talking about some stepped-up enforcement we will be doing in the peninsula. So thank you so much, Chief. So I want to share that news with the residents. And there'll be an update on short-term lodging, and then the fire station we just talked about earlier, so the formerly, the fire station formerly known as the Lido Fire Station may be needing a name change, so we'll ask the community to engage in that discussion. So Thursday, November 19th, 5:00 p.m. Zoom, and you can access the Zoom information on the city website calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move into matters which council members have asked to be placed on a future agenda. The first will be consideration of reviewing the Newport Beach Municipal Code to strengthen short-term lodging enforcement. If you'd like to bring that item back at this time, please raise your hand.
That would be council members Brenner, Duffield, Avery, and Dixon.
Okay. And the second is review of short-term lodging transferability provisions. If you'd like to see that brought back, please raise your hand.
That would be council members Brenner, Duffield, Avery, and Dixon.
Okay. Now we'll move into public comments on consent calendar. Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items one through 11. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the City Council votes on the motion, unless members of the City Council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right, council. Do you have any items to pull, or note a recusal, or vote, note a, note a no vote? Ms. Dixon.
I think I'm clear. Where is, excuse me, for the, I just, on this, says value, is that, that's on the business? Fair market value, excuse me. Yes, I have nothing on consent. Thank you.
Understood. Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, may vote, a lodging, no vote on item 10.
Okay. Ms. Brenner.
I just wanted to know if Mark would give us a little bit of more information on number eight. I don't want to pull it necessarily, but what that will involve as far as community inconvenience.
Sure, I'll, I'll bring him up in just a moment. Mr. Duffield?
I have none.
And Mr. Avery?
I have none.
All right. Mr. Bakowicz. The question posed to you on item number eight, which is the water transmission main phase-two valve replacement, the question is community inconvenience.
Yes, good evening, Mark Bakowicz, and I'll bring up Dave Webb here, too, since this is a partnership project between the two departments, and Dave, maybe you want to lead us off here on the, the public part, and I'll close it in.
Sure. Yes, thank you. This isn't a significant project, multimillion-dollar project to replace our major valves along our major water lines in the city. These are big instruments. Some of these valves will take about nine months to actually get, they're, they're that special. So there will be some inconvenience anytime we're working in the public right-of-way. These are large lines. We are in Jamboree, we are in Coast Highway, we are up in Big Canyon. We will be working with our PIO to get the notice out well ahead of time, but there will be traffic conflicts, there'll be some lane closures, particularly like if we're working on Jamboree, we'll need to move traffic around. We've done this before, as we pave MacArthur, we just try to move traffic over to one of the other arterials, we give them advanced notice. It will also require some night work. We have one operation on Coast Highway and Jamboree, which is one of our large valve, very busy intersection. We'll probably have to do that at night, just because we're trying to reduce the impacts on traffic. So we, we will be doing all this, we'll be doing public outreach on probably each valve as it comes along. Mike Senicore is our project manager, and Jim Hulan will be writing on this, so we'll be doing a lot of outreach with him.
Each, each valve takes, like, approximately how long to?
It'll depend on the valve. Some are small, but Mike, how long would that large valve, let's say a 36-inch take on average? I'm guessing the small valves go relatively quick, but the big ones, it's a big operation to get down, depending on the depth, what we have to do, taking the old valve out, shutting off, and putting it on, but maybe you can, there you go, Mike, you can give some input.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. It depends on the location, but Jamboree and
It depends on the location, but Jamboree and Coast High will be especially challenging. It's just not the valves, but actually the pipe connecting either side of the highway. That work could take up to a few weeks.
Oh.
And we'll be phasing it and then working on the traffic control plans and try to do some of it during the day to not impact the residents. But some of the major tie-ins might have to be at night. We'll be thinking through that strategy with the contractor now that he's here and thinking what's the best for traffic flow as well as resident impact for night work.
So we will be able to send postcards out or something to our nearby residents to let them know when this is happening?
Absolutely. And we, this isn't our first time doing this in major work, so we will, depending on where we're at, some of them will be very quick. We'll get to the HOAs, definitely with City Manager's Office in getting the word out multiple ways. And we will definitely get that out and try to minimize traffic as much as possible. If you're stuck for more than a minute or two, that's where I start getting nervous.
Yes. As long as, as we tell people ahead of time, so they don't call us in the middle of the night. That would be great.
It's also important to know, we don't work between April and October, just because that's the high-water demand season. So we will stop projects and then come back in the following year, in that case, like October, and start again. So it is a long project, you'll be seeing us probably for a year and a half, two years out there as we wait for parts and get things in. And we'll be doing them one at a time as we go through.
All right. Questions? Nope. So before we go back to Mr. Avery, Ms. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hart brought to my attention, these are some dated conflicts, but I still like to lodge them to be safe. Looks like I have a conflict relating to item five, possibly because it's underground construction, related telecom, communications, and as well on item seven for the same reason. Thank you.
Mr. Duffield.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I need to lodge a recusal on item three for business reasons.
All right. Mr. Avery, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move the balance of consent calendar items, one through 11, with no items pulled by the council members, but with a no vote on item 10 by Councilmember Muldoon. And accusations from Councilmember Muldoon on items five and seven, recusal on item three by Councilmember Duffield. And we have just minor amendments to the minutes, which is item one.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Muldoon. All right, at this time, we'll go out to public comment. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, do we have any calls? All right, we'll bring it back. We have a motion in a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item three, ordinance number 2020-27, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending Chapter 17.40, livable boards of Title 17, harbor code of the Newport Beach Municipal Code and other related provisions. The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
At this time, we'll go to public comment on non-agenda items. If you have a public comment on non-agenda, please speak. We'll go to the community room first.
Mayor O'Neil, members of the council, this is Jim Mosher. You may recall that last fall, you heard a appeal of a matter involving a private dock that was being reconfigured, and both before and after the reconfiguration, the floats were going to extend beyond the pierhead line. In response to that, you developed and approved a new policy that was supposed to address pier permit requests. And since they are not broadcast, I wanted to let you know that last night, the Harbor Commission, sitting where you are tonight, heard a very similar application for reconfiguration of a private residential dock. Although their conclusion was very similar to the conclusion you reached last fall, at least to me, that conclusion was clearly contrary to the new policy that you had adopted, which was not supposed to allow any dock to extend beyond the pierhead line unless there had previously been a permit, that is, that there was a permit on file for that residence to extend beyond the pierhead line. What was a little concerning about this was that the Harbor Commission, perhaps a little drunk with the sense of power that they imagine they have following ratification by the voters, seemed to regard your policies as just general guidance to them, that they did not have to strictly follow, or alternatively, that they could interpret the lines of the policy different than they appeared to have been written. I wanted to bring this to your attention because if you are concerned about your policy being followed as written, one or more of you may wish to call that decision up for review, or alternatively, remind the Harbor Commission of how you want your policy enforced, which may or may not have been how they chose to interpret it last night. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring the next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Nancy Scarborough again. I'd like to address an issue of communication between the Newport Mesa Unified School District and the City of Newport Beach, specifically regarding the Ensign Intermediate School construction. The Ensign construction is well underway and portions of it are already complete. If you were to take a look at the new driveway approach into the drop-off parking lot on Cliff Drive, you might notice that the approach is very narrow and has an extremely tight radius. It's unlikely that a Newport Beach emergency vehicle would be able to enter the parking and drive through the area in the event of an emergency. I'm almost positive a fire truck wouldn't be able to make the inner, and make that curve, and probably a paramedic vehicle would have difficulty as well. Since we now have a change of trustees about to take place, I think it would be a good time for the police and fire department, along with community services, to take a look at this situation and consider alternatives to discuss with the Newport Beach, or I mean the Newport Mesa Unified School District. I'm not suggesting that there was any lack of oversight on the part of Newport Beach staff. NMUSD has acted as if they were a sovereign nation during the entire planning and construction of this project. Secondly, the drive-through parking lot on Cliff Drive and the staff parking lot on Irvine have been constructed with an asphalt slope that slopes toward the street. The drainage from the parking surfaces goes under the sidewalk directly into Newport Beach's gutters and storm drains. Current California code does not allow any runoff to leave the property. The district should have installed cisterns to capture the runoff. They did not. This is wrong, and NMUSD should be held responsible. It should not be Newport Beach's problem. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. We'll bring the next speaker, please. All right, do we have any calls? Okay. Bring it back and move into, excuse me, we'll move into public hearing. Item number 12, annual review of zoning implementation for Sierra by the Sea. This was a fairly robust staff report, and I, so, any questions up here?
I just have a question.
Ms. Dixon.
I don't need to have a, who's coming up? I guess Mr. Juerges. Could you just clarify for the public, the name change of Sierra by the Sea? And is that, have you had a chance to look into how these, this name change was handled? Was it filed in public forums, whatever needs to be done?
That's correct. The operators have, do have a corporation. They are allowed to file for a DBA, and that DBA for Sierra by the Sea was filed properly. They have submitted the paperwork to us, the city. Belinda Whalen, the assistant planner, she's been working on that, communicating with the applicant. They are in the community room if you have any questions for them, but it has properly been filed.
All right, any other questions on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go out to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor O'Neil, Jim Mosher again. I just noticed the correspondence in the lobby about the thoroughness of the name change from Sober Living by the Sea to Sierra by the Sea, and the response from the corporation saying, among other things, that they had updated all of their Newport Beach business licenses to the new name, so that it would be clear to the public and everybody who they were and what they were operating under. I checked just an hour before the meeting in our business license database, and I noticed that they had changed the business license names for each of the residential facilities. But they do have, as the staff report mentions, an administrative office where they perhaps hold group meetings, I'm not sure what they do there. It's a waterfront location at 2800 Lafayette. And as of this afternoon, the business license there still says Sober Living by the Sea, which could produce some confusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? All right, do we have any calls? Nope, all right, we'll bring it back up. Do we have a, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Avery.
I'd just like to say, you know, there's a report on, by our code enforcement supervisor about compliance, and there's a number of things in this report, from trash cans to noise to smoking. And what I'm saying is, there were no complaints for anything during this entire, I'm not sure what the period was, but it's remarkable, and I think if this is the case, you know, it's being very well managed. And there's a lot of facilities and a lot of folks, so they're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have a motion then on this item?
I'll make a motion, yes, to approve the item.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Brenner. All right, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion carries unanimously 6-0.
All right, let's go ahead with item number 13. Ms. Dixon, I think earlier you were, you wanted to make sure you had done something on this item, so I wanted to make sure I.
Oh, thank you. Are we going to have a staff discussion on it? It's not necessary, I just had a question.
No, but if you have a question, okay, all right.
Let me get to it. So first of all, thank you for completing this market assessment and bringing it forward. And I understand with the proposed increase that you've talked with the business industry organization, and they are supportive of a phased-in approach, so I appreciate that. You did an amendment on the resolution this afternoon, and that was just to clarify the timing of the effectiveness of.
Correct. The amendment on the reso is just for a 60-day implementation for that first step increase.
My only question is really just for further edification as we go forward. I know, Mr. Juerges, you're going to be coming back in the new year with some other discussions about impact fees and other items related to projects in the city. You do mention that others, you've done some review work with other cities and how they establish their in-lu park fees. And one, I noticed on page 13-5, the City of Irvine requires the subdivider, the project owner, to obtain an appraisal at the time of their application. We do not, the City of Newport Beach does not require that, correct?
No.
So, go ahead.
Correct. We don't require that, but we can change our process if we'd like to in the future.
Because our process has been every, coincident with every census, so, but we did this last in 2000, we did not do it in 2010.
That's correct.
To update the market appraisal.
We're behind on this, and this is something we started working on in 2019, then COVID hit. You know, we should have been, from a staff standpoint, we should have been ahead of it. But, you know, we feel that it's, we've got to bring it back, we've got to update that, and we can change our methodology going forward.
Well, what do you, what's your opinion of how the City of Irvine does it? I mean, do we require, put the burden on the project applicant?
I think it's a, it's a great way to do it. I do want to wait till the 2020 census comes out, I think that's important. And also feel like we need to wait till this general plan update process is complete. The recreational element right now requires five acres per 1,000 people. That is a lot of acreage, and that is kind of a hindrance towards housing. So I think we've got to complete that general plan study and see where that lands also before we kind of change our methodology.
And then also, some cities, or the City of Newport Beach only measures, assesses the in-lu park fee on residential housing. As we know, we are going to be building more multifamily units. We might want to look at that, incorporate that in your future study.
That's correct. You know, the other part we're talking about is bringing back an item for study session for the future in 2021, is more development impact fees, you know, fees associated with fire, police, parks. Those things that we think we can probably talk with the council and get some more direction. Do they want to charge a park fee for multifamily when there is actually a unit to rent? This fee that Lauren Whitlinger here, she's a real property administrator, she did the study, this is really gauged towards for-sale product. So we don't have anything for rent product, and maybe that's something the council would like to consider.
So we really haven't looked at any of this for many, many years, probably since 2007, is that correct? So it's probably time to look at this.
Correct.
So as far as tonight's recommendation, as you've recommended it, we'll move it forward, but to be noted, in the new year, we'd like to look at all these different areas again. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on this item? All right, we'll go out to public comment on this item. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor O'Neil, members of the council, Jim Mosher once again. I had several comments on this item. First of all, the resolution adopting a fee amount that you are considering adopting tonight, that resolution supports an ordinance, and although the fee may be out of date, not having been updated since 2007, the ordinance, or chapter, chapter 19.52 in our municipal code, which explains when the fee is charged, what it's charged for, and how the fee is used, has not been updated since 2001. And the state law that it is supposed to be implementing has been revised multiple times since 2001. So you're adopting a fee to support an ordinance that is now out of date. That said, I was a little disturbed to hear the idea that we might be backing off on our five-acre-per-1,000-park standard. That was hard-won when it was originally implemented, and I think there are many people who would be unhappy to see the city relaxing that standard. In the absence of a staff report, the explanation of the fee that we are recommending to charge is a little hard for the public to understand. My impression, looking at the written staff report, is that the appraisal is based on the cost of buying open space in specific parts of the city. As I understand, our chapter in our municipal code and the state law it's supposed to be implementing, the in-lu fee actually has to be used to purchase park property in the vicinity of the development who is paying the fee. And I can imagine, in many places, there is not open park space that you can just purchase, or run-down industrial area that you can purchase. And I don't see the relevance of those appraisals to the cost of purchasing developed land in other parts of our city, which I can imagine would be quite higher. And then finally, I noticed in the state law that among our responsibilities in collecting these fees is to clearly indicate at the time of collection what they're going to be used for. So we, as a public agency, are supposed to have, it says, a schedule specifying how, when, and where the fees are going to be used to develop a park or recreation facility for the residents from whom it's being collected. It's possible the City of Newport Beach has such a schedule showing where our residual fund what it was collected for and where it's going to be used and when. I am not aware of that schedule, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, do we have any calls on this item? All right, we'll bring it back. Any discussion up here? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Ms. Dixon makes the motion. Do we have a second? Taken by Mr. Avery. Let's go ahead and vote.
With Councilmember Duffield vote, Council, I'm sorry, Councilmember Muldoon voting no, the motion carries five, one.
All right, we'll move into item number 14, Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like to lodge a conflict on this item, based on the designs, which include an underground component, as relates to my prior business interests or business in telecommunications. Thank you.
Yeah, all right, given, given the discussion that we'd had earlier today in the Public Facilities Corporation meeting, I trust that this will be a brief, brief, brief report, although awesome project.
Actually, thank you, and I can make it very brief. We did talk extensively about that tonight. Mr. Houlihan's still with us, said we'd like to go through the report. But what I'd like to really bring forward is we have an exciting project here. The council's been working with the community for some time. Really thankful for all those efforts through Diane's Town Hall, has come up with a great thing. The council's leadership in finding a location and buying property and going through the concept development to come up with the concept for the fire station number two tonight. I'm really excited to bring you an exciting bid tonight for this contract. We are estimating this would come in at 7.9 million, and to our opportunity faith, unfortunately through COVID, I think we've, we've got a sweet spot, and our bid came in about $6,289,000, or about 1.2, 1.1 under our estimate, 26%. So with that, unless you want specific details on it, I would ask that you approve this construction contract tonight, and the other amendments with it, including the financing portion that we talked about earlier. And there are a couple of other little things with regard to architect in here.
I appreciate that. I'll just say a couple of quick things. The first one is, this is a long time coming, and for many of us up on the council, this has been one of those projects we've been looking forward to, to get into. And it's taken a while, and it's gotten to the point now where the financing's available. And for those watching, if you'd like to have a little bit more in-depth discussion about the financing, we did discuss that at the four o'clock hour. But I am just, I'm really thrilled that this is the kind of city that can set aside sufficient funding that can be a, a bedrock for the, for the financing side of things, that allows us to purchase essentially financial flexibility, while also making sure that the need-to-have projects, and a fire station is a need-to-have project, especially when it was built in 1962, and Chief Boiles remind me, was it a somewhat temporary station? It was in the 50s?
Yeah, 51, 52.
As, as a, as a, as a somewhat temporary station. And, yeah, it's been really temporary, so we're, it's like any, any good government project, it's temporary until it's permanent. So anyway, I'm, I'm really thrilled for this, I'm looking forward to seeing this. I know the Corona del Mar Fire Station is now one of the, it probably is the premier fire station, and that's where people used to fight not to be, and now I think they're fighting to be, and that's great. So, hey, really excited for this one. I think this is, this is a really big deal, and I'm looking forward to the groundbreaking. I'm looking forward even more, though, to the completion. Mr. Avery.
Yeah, I concur with those comments of our mayor. You know, coming on council four years ago, you know, that was, it was just starting to roll, and, and then getting that property on the peninsula was huge, and, and it's just totally the right spot, and getting out of where it is, and on the main drag, and trading McDonald's for a really nice-looking building and a fire station on top of it. And I, I just think, it says a lot about this city that we just, I just, it's, it's a real win for us, and I just think it involved so many people, you know, staff, executives, and council, and the public, and, and here it is. And it's going to be built, and it's very smartly, in my view, handled from a financial standpoint. Gives us flexibility going forward in case we have some other issues with finance in terms of the COVID. So I just think so much thought went into it, and it's, it's great. So, real fan, thank you.
All right, Ms. Dixon.
Well, I'll just echo these comments, and certainly this, and I'll make the motion to support this, financing plan and resolution authorizing the preparation of the site. I want to commend staff. I mean, I'm not surprised, none of us are surprised, another outstanding project is now getting started, and we'll see completion, and we'll be proud of it, as we are of all the major capital projects that our excellent public works staff is responsible for. And delighted to see that, I think the last time we had a, a small discussion about this project, it was, we were anticipating higher construction costs, so whatever you did to get those costs down by a million dollars, that was, without compromising the quality of the structure. One aspect that may go a little bit unnoticed is going to be a beautiful, beautiful, functional, it's to be functional fire station, with in and out, or going drive-through, I mean, it really will be state-of-the-art. But importantly also for the peninsula, there will be a public restroom. And this is what many of the businesses, the business owners especially, and residents have wished for, a public restroom in that mid-peninsula area, because it's, otherwise it's a problem on our streets and curbs and people's front yards. So I, I appreciate how you factored that into the overall planning, and I look forward to it. So thank you, thank you, thank you for seizing the opportunity with the McDonald's side coming, and the finance team coming up with the creative financing, and for my colleagues to support this project. It's, it's obviously needed from a functional standpoint, and it will be another source of pride in our community. So thank you, Public Works, thank you, Finance, thank you, city staff, for moving this forward. Appreciate it.
Actually, thank you again, Ms. Dixon, because you're really the fighter for that public restroom that some people just didn't want to have there, but the community wanted it, so thanks for keeping that in.
When we come back from a public comment, I'll make sure that Ms. Dixon has the privilege of making the motion. I would just ask for the privilege of making the second. I'd also like to just quickly thank our finance committee for the work they've, they've done in reviewing the financing on this. I'd also like to thank our city manager's office, Public Works in particular, and then Fire Department for all of the effort that we've made. I'm sure I'm missing a department or two, but in, on the lead side of things, I just want to say thank you. This is, this really will be a big deal for the safety of our community. All right, with that, we'll go out to a public comment on this item. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor O'Neill, members of the council, probably in there somewhere was mentioned you're approving not just the construction, but also the issuance of bonds. And so I'm looking at page 14-3 of the staff report, which itemizes who we are borrowing $9 million to pay. And I would just notice at the very bottom of the list on page 14-3, one of the vendors we are borrowing money to pay is the city of Newport Beach for their permitting fees. Admittedly, it's a very small amount out of the $9 million, which just seems strange to me that we're borrowing money to pay ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Okay, do we have any calls on that? Coming back around. Ms. Ling, would you like to comment on the permitting? Maybe that's for Steve? It's someone.
There, there were some permitting fees, both internal agency and external agencies, we do pay ourselves, that's part of it. We've been doing that with all our projects. So with that, I'd like to all, to recommend and compliment the Community Development Department. They did a lot, hand-in-hand plan checks, and they'll be doing inspection on this. So we do pay their fees, but they're right as part of our partnership.
Sorry, that's not quite what was being asked. What was being asked is, are we financing, are we looking to finance the $16,500 that we were, we were paying, paying ourselves? I think that's, sorry, that's, I think that's the question. It's not whether we have permit fees, I understand that we do. I think the question is.
So the answer to that question is yes, it's part and parcel of the total cost of the project.
Okay.
But I think what I was trying to get at, though, I think, I think there's a lot of fees that are required that actually pass through from us to the state. Those are the fees that are in there. So it sounds like it's just to ourselves, but it's actually fees that actually we have to collect for the state and goes up to there. So I see Jim Houlihan ready to jump up if you want more detail on that.
Oh, I see, okay. So that, it's not like, it's not like we could waive these, they would actually be required? Okay.
Yes, and it's not like then we're paying ourselves for that through the financing.
No, that's, that's a good question, so, okay, understood, we're good. All right, all right, with that, we're, do, I'm sorry, did we have any calls on this? Okay. All right, with that, we'll go to Ms. Dixon.
I'd like to make a motion. Before I do that, just as the mayor said, we always leave somebody out, the Fire Department was obviously instrumental in designing and scoping this project, and meeting their needs for high, reliable, fast, beating the national norms and response times, and this fire station will add to our capability. And thank you, thank you, Chief Boiles, for everything you've done and your team to bring this forward, and all the departments. It's, it takes a village, literally, to put all this together, and it's really going to be an exciting project. So I make, I'm proud to make the motion for the financing plan, to approve the financing plan and resolution authorizing the preparation, sale, and delivery not to exceed $10 million for our fire station number two, soon to be named, something else with the community's involvement. Thank you.
All right, and that's the award of the, the construction contract as well.
Yes.
All right. All right, and I'm going to second that. So I, by the way, have a, I, I agree with staff's thought in terms of what this is going to be named. I'm not going to say it, because I, I know you're going to be talking about it, but I, I like what staff's thought is that. Anyway, all right, we'll move forward. So we have a motion and a second, let's go ahead and vote.
And that's also adoption of the amended resolution, correct?
Correct, oh, yes, so hang on one second. That's, that's what you've understood, the amended?
Yes, of course, yes.
Okay, second, agrees.
The motion carries unanimously, five, zero, with Councilmember Muldoon recusing himself.
That is a long time coming. All right, we'll move now into, give me just a moment, item number 15, the COVID-19 update.
Mayor, would you like me to?
Oh, yeah.
Begin on the, okay, sorry.
Oh, yes. Please go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I just have a very brief presentation. If we go on to this first slide here, this just, just as a reminder, on the tiered framework from the state, and we are currently in that substantial, that red tier of, of, not widespread, but the next level of, of the coronavirus risk there. So the next slide here on that is continuing to look at the trend for Orange County, which you can see, the numbers that come out every Tuesday, the one that just came out today actually shows some positivity from, from the last week. You can see the case per 100,000 went down to 5.6, which still puts us in the, in the red tier. The positivity rate at 3.3 is actually very good. It actually pulls us, it would put us into less risky tier, but because of the other ones, the health equity metric and the case per 100,000 keeps us in the red. So, so that's the good news. But I want to do that with a big caveat, because as you know, a lot of these, the data that goes in here, the state uses a, a little bit of a complicated formula, that some of it's a bit of a mystery, but does look at a seven-day lag, and is a look back when they do these figures. And so we know the most recent numbers that have been coming out from the county, I'm just taking a look since Friday, November 6th through today, we have, that case per 100,000's been in the 300, 322, 500, 300, 267 today. Those are very high numbers. And hearing the county speak, they say when the numbers are in the mid-200s and higher, those usually translate into a higher, that case per 100,000 that would land us back into the purple tier. So that's very concerning to see these numbers, and so we're waiting kind of anxiously for next week's figures that come out, that there could be a very good chance that we will end up in that purple tier. Now, I do want to emphasize the way the tier system works, you have to be, you have to hit the numbers in, in say a worst tier, like the purple tier, for two weeks in a row, and then there's an adjudication process with the state before we actually move into that purple tier. So if we do have numbers that start next week, it would probably be two to three weeks past that where we would actually be into the purple tier. So there's a little bit of time, we'll see if there's, with additional testing, and see if the numbers change to hold us in the red. But if you also see from the next slide, this is a color coding of all the tiers for all the counties in the state, and you can see us down there, we're kind of the lone red tier amongst a sea of purple. And with the counties surrounding us in the purple tier, people move across whether work-wise, whether, you know, just our personal lives. So we, we're not in a bubble, and I think the fact that there's other counties in this purple tier puts us at that risk, too. And you just, you hear that generally, too, not just in California, but across the nation of concern, especially with this upcoming flu season and colder weather, that we're seeing a surge happening. I think one of the positives is the numbers don't seem as steep as earlier in the summer, but it's certainly something that we're cautiously watching right now, and that's my report I have for tonight.
Yeah, I like what you're saying. The, generally speaking, because of the way we, the numbers work out, we need to see, on average, around 220 cases per day to stay in the red. Just a quick highlight of, I was looking on the Orange County COVID-19 dashboard, on, remember, 220. On November 2nd, it was 366. On November 3rd, it was 363. On November 4th, it was 356. On November 5th, it was 343. So with a seven-day lag, that will factor in coming up pretty soon. And so I would caution everyone to pay attention to that and anticipate that, I believe, next week, we will probably see a purple tier warning. Remember that there is that two weeks, but if we don't, if we continue to see the numbers increasing like that, we will probably re-enter purple. And the only other thing I would mention real quickly, hospitalizations here in Orange County were, our peak back in July was about 722 hospitalizations, so those are patients who are positive, positive for COVID, who are currently in the hospital. Currently, we're at about 224, but that is an increase over the last few weeks. And fortunately, ICUs, we've also seen a little bit of an increase. Those aren't, I would, I don't think we would call them spikes, but they're certainly increases. They're seeing a spike, though, down in San Diego, for example, and so we're watching all the numbers around us, and as the numbers are getting worse, perhaps not surprisingly, ours are as well. So it's, it's important to continue to take this seriously, and especially when you're in close proximity, you, you go ahead and use that facial covering. So, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you, Mayor. There was a story in today's Wall Street Journal, I think it was, that some study has come out, it's nationally, about showing that the spikes in cities are coming from, or they, they do the tracing, and it's determined it's coming from restaurants and bars, not in our city. I'm just saying, this is where they're identifying that these are repeat sources. Which, how are we doing on our enforcement of what are existing, with just enforcing the state's mandates and our own city special enforcement of all of our, I mean, we don't have a mask mandate, I'm not suggesting any new enforcement or, or code laws, I'm just saying, how are we doing on enforcement? Are we actively enforcing?
We do, you know, our, our first method is to educate with businesses, and we do, if we have complaints, we do follow up on those and start there with the business owners. Certainly, we're very active. We do have nighttime code enforcement that we're starting up, and we have holiday, holiday weekend coverage through the scheduling of our code enforcement officers. So we are trying to certainly get at the, on the restaurant side, when they are operating, to be out there and to do periodic surprise inspections as well, just to continue to maintain that.
So we've been active in that area?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, one last thing, if you're going on the Orange County website, the dashboard they've got, you can always look to see how all of our ZIP codes, they actually break them down by ZIP codes, how the ZIP codes are doing based on the positivity percentage and case count rates. So if you're interested at all, every ZIP code in, in Newport Beach, as you would probably guess, solidly within red, some are within. guess, is solidly within red, some are within the, some are actually within the orange. And the length of the peninsula from mid, all the way down is currently at zero, at least on that seven, seven-day lag, so.
Well, good.
Yeah, there you go. They're doing something right down there. So anyway, I wanted to point that out. My only caution would be, make sure you're paying attention to population size when you're, when you're looking at that.
I guess I would just also say, it's not just our residents. I mean, we have an attractive community that people come from other communities to enjoy our hospitality, so, and they wouldn't be recorded as Newport Beach ZIP codes.
That's true. I'm talking more, only about our residents.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. So anyway, my, my point being, if you'd like to get more information, there's lots more on the site. All right, we'll go out to public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor O'Neill, as to how this affects our city government, I believe the Central Library goes by the state museum criteria, so a reversion in tiers might cause the Central Library to close again after being open for a few weeks. My question would be, as to the City Hall and the services there, I think we have more discretion, and so are we anticipating that that might close again? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the community room? All right, any calls? Good question, Ms. Liang. What would it take for us to look, look again at closing the, closing City Hall?
Our City Hall functions are part of a central operation, so they are kind of separately from the, each of the tier sections. I've been monitoring that very carefully. I do think, I am looking at what the numbers are with our employees, and thankfully, we've had actually several weeks of no COVID cases within our employee groups, so that's been very good. We do have very strong social distancing requirements, mask requirements within City Hall. And then we just, we looked at that, we factor in particularly areas where we do have a high level of demand on our services, particularly at our permit counters. So we do want to balance and make sure we have the safety, but still providing customer service. So as we continue to look at, to see where the data looks, looks like, where the particular cases are happening within the city, we'll adapt and adjust, and I think that will have to continue for some time.
All right. Okay. And Madam Clerk.
Now's the time for motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right, do we have any such motions? All right, seeing none, we stand adjourned. Thank you.